You're ready.
Ready to go.
Okay. This meeting is called to water. This is the July 12th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to start with approving the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or voted? I have motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 14th, June 15th, and our second meeting on June 15th.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted? Okay. Next order of business is announcements. First order of business is to welcome new employees to town. The first is to Department of Public Works, Michelle Cronin as administrative assistant for the fire department. Adonis Calderon is firefighter from the police department. Kyle Godaro dispatcher. Jennifer Bellevue dispatcher. Tyler Vlass, a patrolman. So welcome to all of you. Second notice is the WRTA is going to have a public meeting. It's second one, right? The first one they already had. On July 15th. Are they having two on? I'm sorry, on July 14th. One at 2:00 PM and one at 6:00 PM. And they'll be collecting feedback and comments regarding the proposed route and schedule changes to certain bus routes. That would go into effect Saturday, August 27th. And more information can be found on their website at the rta.com. We also have a DEI update. Ms. Flynn, would you like to?
Sure. So thanks, Mr. Apollo. We have had five workshops with visions, which is the DEI consultant that we selected. We had two in May, two in June, and one so far in July. I think we've learned a lot that has strengthened our understanding and will help inform our strategy. The current status is for Ms. Collin and I to draft a leadership commitment statement for the board's consideration, which will outline our role in advancing diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in Shrewsbury. And we plan to review that at our next workshop this coming Monday. And then thereafter, our plan is to move to draft a DEI committee charter and establish a DEI committee. So I think once we get through these next, you know, workshop or two, we'll have a more robust update for the community.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mizikad, do you have an announcement to make?
Yeah, so I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes with an update on the strategic plan and really spend a couple of minutes describing the next round of community engagement. We're going to share a couple of slides, just give a brief summary of where we've been to date, and then what the upcoming steps are. We're really moving into the final phase of the strategic plan with significant amount of public engagement coming in the coming weeks. And this is kind of the heart of the public feedback in a lot of in-person and virtual meetings. So just to recap where we've been. Formally, although the board has been working and discussing this for several years, we moved to secure a consultant in the fall of 2021 and had some preliminary staff meetings to kind of focus the consultant. The first formal phase of this strategic plan and visioning work for the community began in January of 2022, where we solicited feedback through the National Community Survey, through residents. Everyone had the opportunity to participate, and we had roughly a thousand responses to that survey. With the information that was provided to us in the survey, both strengths, weaknesses, and opportunity, we again engaged with our consultant to develop mission and value statements internally by staff. With that information in hand, that was compiled and provided to the Board of Selectmen, who really worked through the months of May and June to develop strategic outcomes, which will be the centerpiece for community engagement as we move into the summer. So all this work that I barely touched upon, which we spent hours and hours working on, has led to everything that we want the community to provide us feedback on. And the community feedback will be everything from, you know, are we on the right track? Is there something that we missed? And how can we even improve the work that's been done internally and by the Board of Selectmen? So a vision statement then has been developed for the community as Shrewsbury is a vibrant, inclusive, collaborative community where all can thrive. And that is our main kind of public facing vision of the direction that we're trying to move in and our desired future state. And then everything below that underpins that and supports and helps drive us towards the vision. So the mission statement, which is really a staff-oriented statement that describes our strategy for moving towards the vision, is that in Shrewsbury, we're dedicated professionals who are collaborative creatively and collaboratively to provide exceptional services that enhance the quality of life and surpass the needs of those we serve. And we adhere to the three core values of integrity, inclusion, and innovation. And obviously, the IN in both the start of the mission statement and the values is purposefully underlined because we want everything to be inclusive with a high level of community feedback and engagement through our processes. So the strategic outcome areas are five main areas that we've developed that will help us move towards the vision statement and provide services to residents to help them really live their best lives, high-quality well-being, and provide exceptional services to them. So I'm just going to briefly touch on each one of these. And these are the main areas that will be in various formats and ways engaging with the residents on to make sure that we didn't miss anything and ask for ways to improve upon them. So engaged and connected is a strategic outcome area that we are going to use to really describe how we're going to engage with our resident and create community connections. And then each one of these strategic outcome areas have a greater level of detail that further illustrate and provide understanding and ability for lower-level tactical plans, projects, and activities to attach to and work on a more short-term basis to move towards the vision statement. So I should have said at the beginning, the vision statement is really targeted for a 2030 timeframe. And then the strategic outcome areas will be revisited on a three- to five-year basis. And we kind of made sure that we had a shorter horizon on this vision statement since it's our first comprehensive strategic planning initiative. So Taylor can go to the next strategic outcome area, which is healthy and thriving. So Shrewsbury enables the highest quality of life through these five different tactical areas under this strategic outcome. And it describes, excuse me, six tactical areas, describes a variety of ways we're really trying to support the well-being of residents through a number of different services and opportunities for residents to engage and participate with the local government. The next area is prosperous. So Shrewsbury fosters partnerships for residents and businesses in the community that result in. So a lot of this has to deal with economic, environmental, and quality of life areas that staff and departments, boards of committees will be able to work towards in building a better quality of life through a strong economic base. After prosperous, we move into the area of sustainable. Shrewsbury prioritizes environmental responsibility through these four key areas. Obviously, trying to be our best stewards in both the opportunities that we provide our residents and the steps that we take to preserve and protect the natural environment and how we influence it. And then finally, exceptional is the strategic outcome area for the real tactical area of how the government provides services across all business lines. So Shrewsbury's town government and workforce set a standard for excellence through. And then through these five service areas, we're really at a much more tactical level than any other strategic outcome. And we'll build programs, services, and projects for the residents through this strategic outcome area. So obviously, I went through those really quick, and it wasn't my intention to get into a lot of detail because we're about to spend the next four weeks, the final two weeks in July and the first two weeks in August with residents and getting them up to speed on the work that we've done and asking for their engagement and conversation, feedback through these strategic outcome areas. With the confirmation and revision of the strategic outcome areas, staff will then work to develop annual goals, tactics, activities, and projects that will be part of the 2024 budget process and then be integrated into individual employees and departments' performance management plan throughout the course of the year. So the community feedback sessions are going to be highly engaging. Some of them will happen virtually. Some of them will happen in person. And then some of them will be kind of formal standalone settings. And some of them will be what we call drop-in meetings. And I'll kind of get into those a little bit more as we work through. So with regards to virtual meetings, we're looking to provide residents with a unique opportunity and very flexible schedule for them to engage with us through a virtual platform that will occur through a variety of dates and times in July and August. So the first meeting would be July 21st in the evening. And then we'll have a mid-afternoon meeting on July 26th. An earlier morning meeting on August 5th, and then an evening meeting on Friday, August 12th. As far as in-person opportunities, there'll be two key opportunities where we will have Raf Telus, our consultant, onsite to help facilitate these. They'll both be located in the main library meeting room. The first would be the evening of Tuesday, August 2nd, and the following morning on Wednesday, August 3rd. Drop-in meetings, so residents will have the opportunity to engage with staff at drop-in meetings. We'll have a tent set up, and you'll be able to provide the same level of feedback that you had at our virtual meetings and our more formal, in-person, dedicated meetings. We'll be at the Shrewsbury Farmer's Market on July 27th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And we'll be at the food trucks at Town Hall on Thursday, July 28th from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. And that will continue into August with meetings on August 4th with the food trucks, the Farmer's Market on August 10th, and then food trucks again on August 11th. So again, it was our kind of focus with a publicly engaged strategic planning process to provide residents with ample opportunity despite it being the summer months. We're trying to avoid everyone's vacations. If someone's taken a four-week vacation the last two weeks in July and the first two weeks in August, I apologize. But we're trying to do the best we can to give you an opportunity to give feedback on this really important, comprehensive strategic planning process. We're really excited to be at this point and know that residents can help us improve it even further from here and help us build out the strategies to achieve the strategic outcomes that we've set forth. So we'll be sending this information out in a variety of means and methods to remind residents of all these opportunities. And happy to discuss any of this with the board, answer any questions you may have about these sessions. But we encourage everyone to take advantage of the opportunity and engage with us throughout this process.
Mr. Mizikad, one question in particular. You know, sometimes I don't hear so good, but those library dates? They didn't seem to match what you said.
Okay.
What did you say? I thought you said the second and the third.
August 2nd. Oh, do I have, I'm sorry, August 1st and 2nd, you're right. My, I have an old slide deck that I'm looking at. I should be looking at the screen that Taylor's.
Okay, so the ones that are.
It's August 1st and 2nd. Yep.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just one. I love how many opportunities there are for people to engage. And even the person on the four-week vacation can probably manage a virtual meeting. For the virtual meetings, what's going to be the process for someone to sign up for them if they want to attend a virtual meeting? I'm assuming they'll need to get a link or something of that nature.
Yeah, so we'll just provide a link and go ahead, Taylor.
So two of the virtual meetings are being hosted by Raf Telus, and they utilize the Zoom platform. So they'll have to register in advance for those two meetings. Those are the first two on July 21st and July 26th. The two dates in August, we'll be utilizing Google Meet, and we're still working on a registration meeting so we can get a good idea of who plans to show up and how we can accommodate them.
Just one follow-up.
Sure.
Is there a limit to how many people can attend a virtual meeting?
Not that we're aware of.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I appreciate the effort of getting the word out. So hopefully, those that do receive the message will help us in spreading it to others so that others will engage. I think we universally hear from people that, how can you make a decision in a town of 40,000 that, you know, you only got 600 people to engage? So we really do want people to take advantage of this opportunity. So if they have a reason that they can't, you know, reach out, and we'll see what we can do to accommodate them.
Anything else? I have one last announcement. Probably School Department may have already announced this, but I read this in the Community Advocate, and I was pretty impressed by it. So I thought I would announce it anyways because I think the young man deserves recognition. Kevin Siniger, who's a rising junior at Shrewsbury High School, came in first place in Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair just recently. And his project, which I thought was pretty impressive, that won him the first prize, was entitled "Reducing the Impact of Wingtip Vordeces on Aircraft Through the Use of Novel Winglets." I thought that was pretty impressive. And I was thinking back to my time going from my sophomore to junior year. And I'm sure that that's what I was thinking of that summer also. So I just think it's worth the congratulations and making note of that. So it seems like he has a bright future ahead of him. So anyways. Mr. Mizikad, do you have anything else on time?
Yeah, a couple of things, if I may. The first is providing an update on recent COVID-19 cases. So for the weekend of July 1st, there were 58 total cases. For the week ended July 8th, there were 48 total cases. So the total cases reported since your last meeting on June 28th is 106. Bring in the total number since I started tracking at the beginning of the pandemic to 8,699. So we will continue to provide updates at board meetings as needed. Finally, I wanted to provide a board with an update on 1 through 7 Maple Avenue, which is the redevelopment of the Beal School project. So in accordance with the land disposition agreement, Civicco Greenlee has started their field investigations. And those field investigations have allowed them to identify the permits that they are, will require throughout the local permitting process and the state permitting process. With that information in hand and provided to the town, the developer has indicated that they would submit to go through the local permitting process no later than starting in October of 2022 of this year. And through the commitment and achievement of this next milestone in the process and Civicco taking this next step, this has made an additional $12,500 of their preliminary deposit for the project, non-refundable. So it's good to see Civicco continue to move forward and meet the deadlines associated with the land disposition agreement that the board put in place. And just generally, they're making progress for this project and the redevelopment of the town center. So we'll keep the board informed as they move closer to getting that planning board date agenda on the books. But they continue to do what the board has asked them to do through the LDA.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next order of business is a 7:10 scheduled public hearing with Eugene R. Richard Esquire on behalf of Price Chopper Operating Company of Massachusetts, DBA Price Chopper 229, 733 Boston Turnpike, regarding an application for a change of offices, directors, LLC managers, change of ownership interest, change of stock interest, and a change of manager to their Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store License. Do we have them on? Okay, I don't see them there. This actually, this hearing was at our last meeting, and it was a minor technical error. And we're doing the hearing over. So that's really what it's about. But we have to have the hearing to make sure that we get everything correct. So Attorney Richards, are you here? Attorney Richards?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Sorry you have to come back again, but it's better to get this right than find out later that something got mixed up. So do you want to just briefly run through this again?
Certainly. Glad to be back and happy to review this again. We were basically asking for three changes. Two of them relate to a recent merger between Price Chopper and Tops Market. And those don't really affect the operation at the store level. The third is related to the actual store location. And I'll start with that one. That's a change of manager, on-premise manager, from Mr. Miller to Chris Lozong. Mr. Lozong has 25 years with Price Chopper. He's managed four stores, worked in several stores that are licensed to sell alcohol. He's tips trained and has had no prior licensing issues at any place where he has worked or at this particular store. Then the two matters that relate to the merger are changes in two officer positions for the licensed entity. The Blaine-Brinkhurst is becoming president, and Jody Plonsky is becoming vice president. And then Frank Percy is replacing Neil Gollum as a director. Those three changes are being made for the licensed corporation. And then the third is somewhat complicated, but it involves the change in shareholders in that all the Price Chopper shareholders that were previously owners are still part, or owners of a new entity that's the holding company for the merged entity. That's called Northeast Grocery, Inc. But basically, all those old shareholders of Price Chopper are still involved, still own. But all the shareholders for the Tops Market ownership entity are also being added. So that's the change of ownership that's being involved. Basically, quite a few people in entities, about 300, the vast majority of those having a very small interest. But that's what we're here to request your approval again.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to be heard on this? Okay. They're seeing no one. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay. You have a motion second to close the public hearing. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or voted? Okay. The hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Price Chopper Operating Company of Massachusetts, Inc., DBA Price Chopper Number 229's application for multiple amendments to its Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store License.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or voted? Mr. Richards, are we all set?
That's great. I appreciate it and thank you on the board.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. At least you didn't have to drive all the way out here, right?
That's true, but always happy to attend board meetings.
Okay. Have a good evening. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business is continuance of a public hearing with Nuba Rossi on behalf of Shrewsbury Street Restaurant LLC, DBA Terra Brasilis, 20 to 50 Boston Turnpike, Suite 7B, B7, for a common victors license. Hi, would you like to come forward, please? Could you introduce yourself for the record?
Hello, everyone. My name is Nuba Rossi, general manager and partner of Terra Brasilis. We are moving, we would like to move to Shrewsbury. We own four restaurants so far. We have Brazilian Steakhouse, self-serve buffet, fresh salad station, hot item buffet, and a rochisserie carving station. We've been open since 2001 at Fremingham locations. We have one store, Bridgeport, Connecticut, one in Uster, which we're trying to relocate our restaurant since our lease is up and they couldn't sign a new lease. Yeah?
Okay. What are your hours of operation going to be?
It's seven days a week, 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? When are you planning on opening?
We're planning on opening September 1st. We are already like 80% done with renovation, you know? But you never know. Always something comes up, you know, with the city inspector and things like that.
So you're not requesting an alcohol license, right?
We are. We are. So we have a lawyer doing that for us. I'll be here, I believe, next month.
Okay.
I just spoke with our lawyer. He's applying this week. So probably be seeing me again next month.
Okay.
I'm a bartender too, general manager, alcohol license. I worked for 13 years for a country club as a bartender. Yeah, so looking forward to, you know.
Okay. If we grant this license, are you going to open even before you get the alcohol license? Because it usually takes a little while to get an alcohol license.
I know. I would have to contact my partners. We're planning to open with the alcohol license since we have a few drinks that it belongs to the Brazilian culture.
Yep.
You know? But it's up to, I don't have the answer right now, but next time when I'm here. here, I will let you know.
Got your choice. Just was wondering. Anyone else? No? This is a public hearing, right?
Yep.
It's a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to be heard on this? Nope. Okay. There being no one, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Uh, the hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, approve the common victor license, um, for Nuba Rossi on behalf of Huesbury Street Restaurants LLC, DBA Terra Brasilius, twenty through fifty Boston Turnpike Suite B.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Uh, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. You're all set on this one? Um, probably see you in a couple of weeks, right?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on to our next, um, public hearing with Imad Benjamin on behalf of Ramsey, Inc., DBA J&amp;M Market, one-seventeen Clinton Street for a common victors license. Good evening. Would you like to come forward?
Good evening to everyone.
Like to introduce yourself for the record, please?
My name is Imad Beniamin, uh, and, uh, I own the business in one-seventeen Clinton Street, J&amp;M Market and Pizza. Uh, which right to open a pizza. We have a convenience store and, uh, beer and wine there and which right to open a pizza. And we have everything ready to go. All the license is done and everything is done. Just we need some tables for the people who is gonna come in, just sit down and to eat. We have a lot of companies around the area and we have a lot of workers across the street and everywhere, so we need like a few tables, uh, for the people to come sit down to drink lunchtime or something.
When, when you, um, when you opened, you thought about doing this and then decided to hold off for a while, right? You were, you were going to do the pizza and then you decided not to for a while, so you, now you're just moving ahead with it, right?
No, I just get sick and I had open heart surgery, lost ear, and just delete everything.
Okay. All right. So we, we had seen the plans for this before. We, we had seen plans for this before.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to tell us? Are you good?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Um, what will be the hours?
Uh, ten to nine.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this application? There being no one, uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the common victuals license for Imad Benjamin on behalf of Ramsey, Inc., doing business as J&amp;M Market, one-seventeen Clinton Street.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. You're all set.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good one.
You too. Thank you. The next order of business is to review an act on the town manager's appointment of Ash, Ashley, uh, Philidays of sixteen Meadow Sweet Road to the Commission on Disabilities to fill a vacant seat with a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four pursuant to MGL Chapter forty, Section eight, subsection J.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Item ten is to review an act to declare the following properties available for disposition. Uh, thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twelve Cedar Road, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and two-ten North Quinsigamond Avenue. As you recall, um, these parcels were, um, were brought before town meeting, uh, and we explained, um, that they were unique parcels that, uh, we had come across that, um, had some encroachments on them, at least most of them did, small parcels, um, and we asked town meeting for authorization to be able to dispose of them, uh, pursuant to, uh, the applicable, applicable sections of the law. And so the first thing we would have to do, um, is to declare them, uh, available for disposition, and that would require a certified vote. Mr. Mizuka, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing on this one. No.
Okay. In the packages, um, Mr. Dobson gave us a pretty, um, complete description of the parcels. So any questions, uh, comments on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You planning to just talk about the disposition right now and not talk about ten and eleven together? Just keep, you want to keep it separate, right? So?
Um, well, actually, they're two, we can talk about them together. I think the votes need to be separate though, right?
Yes.
Sure.
Because, I mean, when I think through the disposition, right, I'm automatically thinking through the deed restrictions because that informs my decision as to how I vote on the disposition. So that's just the reason why I was asking if we could maybe go through the deed restrictions, just as part of it.
Sure.
Thank you. Do you want me to go through that?
Yeah, I can, I can run through. So, um, we're setting up, uh, I'll talk about the process that we'll use and the deed restrictions that we're seeking to, uh, place on each and every one of these properties. So, uh, with regards to the deed restrictions, um, we are prohibiting, um, we're placing deed restrictions that would prohibit these lots to be further subdivided, and in the case that a property was acquired by an, uh, butter, the properties would have to be, uh, formally combined into a single lot. Um, we are restricting, uh, the addition, the, uh, ability to construct additional dwelling units, um, on the premises, so if there's no, uh, once the, if the lots were combined by an butter, um, we, they would not be able to utilize the larger, uh, footprint to construct, uh, additional dwelling units if that's, even if that's permissible under zoning. Um, these individual, uh, lots in and of themselves, as they will be carved out, um, for two-ten North Quinsigamond and, and the remainder are not large enough. They're not buildable lots, so, um, we're prohibiting from them being combined and then developed further. And, um, further that any actions that need to be taken from a survey standpoint, um, the combination or the combining of the lots, et cetera, would be, uh, those costs would be borne by the purchaser. So, um, all these restrictions would run with the land and not with the owner, so they'd be perpetual restrictions upon them. So those are the three main restrictions that, uh, we are seeking to place upon them through a vote, uh, through item agenda on this eve, uh, through item eleven on this evening's agenda. With regards to the process, um, we have identified, uh, and are using the assessed value, um, for purposes of determining the procurement process that we use. Each and every one of these parcels are valued at less than thirty-five thousand dollars, so although they're not subject to, uh, Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty-B, Section sixteen, which, uh, deals with real estate, we'll be following a process very similar to that, uh, to ensure a competitive and fair process is handled. So we'll be, uh, formally notifying each and every abutter, even abutters across the street, that we're, are making these properties available for sale. We'll also be running, uh, a two-week notice, uh, in, uh, the community advocate identifying that the properties are for sale and how individuals may be able to, uh, bid on them. And the bidding process that we'll use is we'll be awarding, uh, the sale of the land subject to deed restrictions to the highest bidder. Um, we will be setting a floor to the bids or a minimum bid price, which would be the current assessed value for each of these parcels. Um, and the sealed bid, uh, it'll be a, a formal sealed bid process, so, uh, we'll open bids publicly and read them aloud, and, uh, that will allow everyone to know who is the highest bidder, um, apparent high bidder, and then they'll have to go through the formal process to acquire the property through a purchase and sales agreement with the town. So very similar to, uh, Chapter thirty-B, Section sixteen process, even though we're not required to do it, uh, in order to garner the highest price, um, and add these restrictions onto the properties.
And, and these parcels were all relatively small. None of them are, um, buildable parcels as they are right now.
That is correct.
Okay.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Can I just ask a technical question to the town manager? So if one of the requirements is to combine, if you're an adjacent property owner, buy it and then have, combine the lots, how will we be able to, if you have the restrictive covenant going forward, absent doing a survey of the land, how are you gonna know, once you combine the deed, which part of that deed is restricted? Or could we do it at close? Could that be a requirement?
Yeah, it would be once the lots combined.
Okay. So that'll be a requirement rather than a run. It's gonna just make it, okay. It's not a second step process. Okay. That makes it easy. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
So just one more, what you just said made me think of something, if that's okay. So if it's not purchased by an abutter, then it would not be combined with another property. But if someone who purchased it sold it to an abutter later, what, how would the deed restriction still hold?
They would, they would hold into the property into itself, so it wouldn't be able to be built upon.
I don't, I don't know if I'm following you. I'm sorry.
It's not the minimum lot size, right?
Yeah.
Because it's...
Yeah, it can't be built upon to start with, but if it's combined with an adjacent lot because it's resold, the deed restriction would still be in place for that individual lot.
Okay. Thank you.
So through this action, we are not enabling further development and of...
Well, I know that's the point. I'm just...
Yep.
When you said something, Mr. Stamen, it kind of made me think of like a workaround. And if I can think of a workaround, I'm sure someone with more land development skill than, uh, than myself could do so as well.
And, and we'll make sure that we address that clearly with council, and if we have to make any changes, we'll come back.
Great.
Can I just ask one more technical? So let's say, I guess, will we allow this lot to count towards the minimum lot size for development? So you can't develop on that lot, but I don't know all the lots there, but say that this space would, combined with another adjacent lot and one existing lot, would we allow this space, allow the acreage here, even though it's small, and this, to count towards the square foot, the, the size necessary to develop? Would it be yes, long as it doesn't build on that part? Okay.
Right. Right. And all current abutting properties have buildings on them. Eaton Avenue is adjacent to a commercial property on, uh, one of its abutters is an adjacent, uh, one of its abutting properties is commercial. But currently, all abutting properties have, uh, they're already built upon.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Mizuka, we need a, a motion?
Yep. So for, um, agenda item number ten, um, a motion would be to, uh, declare the fall, declare thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twelve Cedar Road, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and a portion of two-ten North Quinsigamond Avenue, um, excess property available for disposition.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we declare the following properties as excess and available for disposition: thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twelve Cedar Road, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and a portion of two-ten North Quinsigamond Avenue.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. The next order of business is to review and act on the deed restrictions for the following properties. Do you want to review those one more time before we go through it? Are everybody comfortable?
Me. Doesn't hurt to say them again.
So, um, the premises of thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twelve Cedar Road, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and a portion of two-ten North Quinsigamond draw the following restrictions beyond the necessary subdivision of two-ten North Quinsigamond. From the rest of two-ten, the premise of all properties may not be further subdivided in any manner, including without limitation subdivisions permitted by, uh, so-called approval not required process in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P. Note, uh, second, no additional dwelling unit shall be constructed or added to the premises of all the properties. And number three, the purchasing party, if a direct abutter to the property, shall be required to formally combine the purchased lot with their existing lot through the appropriate process in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P. These restrictions shall run with the land.
Okay. So that covers all of them, right?
It does.
Okay. And are you gonna add that other? Other item?
I didn't think we needed to add anything.
We don't, we don't need it to, okay. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, um, I move that we, um, put in place the following, the, put in place the deed restrictions for the following properties, um, as listed in this document and stated by the town manager, uh, thirty-three Eaton Avenue, twelve Cedar Road, twenty-five Harvard Avenue, and a portion of two-ten North Quinsigamond Avenue.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Okay. Okay. Next order of business is to go through correspondence. An email dated June twenty-fourth from Representative Hannah Kane, um, regarding a Route twenty-five million dollar earmark, um, in the ten-point-nine billion dollar transportation, uh, Bond bill, um, uh, to help with the reconstruction, um, of a portion of Route twenty. You know, hopefully that money will get released from the Bond bill. Item thirteen is an email dated July fifth from, uh, Robert Holland of the Scholarship Committee, um, forwarding a thank you note, um, from Lena Ibe, um, Ibe Yumi, um, thanking us, uh, thanking the Scholarship Committee for, um, the scholarship she received, so noted. Item fourteen is dated July fifth from Christine Shepherd, practice manager at Huesbury Animal Hospital regarding special, uh, permit complaint, um, which I believe the manager was also, manager's office was copied on, um, regarding, um, an ongoing issue between, um, an abutter across the street and the animal hospital, um, that is trying to be worked out. Item fifteen is an email dated July seventh from Keith Elms, the animal control officer, uh, just a quarterly, uh, warrant report. Next, um, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, uh, ZBA decisions from June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, uh, Proaxion, can't say it, Proaxion, Aniyadi Group LLC for special prints and variants for property on one-ninety-three Hartford Turnpike, so noted. WE Enterprise LLC for special permits and variances for property located on fifteen Lakeside Drive. Item eighteen is ZBA decision for Love &amp; Realty for variances for property located at two-thirty-five Main Street. Item nineteen, um, is a decision for Enos Shehu for special permit for property located at twenty-four Oakland Avenue. Item twenty is a ZBA decision for John and Kathy, um, that's actually supposed to be Robosco for special permit and variances for property on Old Faith Road. And item twenty-one is ZBA decision for Bruno Arlandi for a special permit for property located on six, uh, Vinyway. I believe that is all we have on the agenda. Um, is there anything else to come before the board in open session? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, all those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. So voted. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening.